Parting inconvenience, Council President Clark, please start again.
Ready?
Yes, sir, please start.
Good morning. Here is called to order, I recognize the President of the whole committee members. This is the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole. The purpose of this hearing is to take test resolutions two zero zero one, two zero seven, two zero zero eight, two zero zero nine, two zero zero two zero, two zero, two zero, two, two zero, two twenty-three, two zero, two twenty-four, and two zero, two two five. Okay?
Sir.
I will now ask, please, we to turn off the resolution.
Resolution two zero zero one five one, approving the appointment of Deborah Muller to the Board of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority. Resolution two zero zero two one seven, confirming the reappointment of Julia Danzy to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. Resolution two zero zero two one eight, confirming the reappointment of Letitia Ahia Hinton to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. Resolution two zero zero two one nine, confirming the reappointment of Mallory Fix Lopez to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. Resolution two zero zero two two zero, confirming the reappointment of Dr. Maria McCollgan to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. Resolution two zero zero two two two, confirming the reappointment of Angela MacGyver to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. Resolution two zero zero two two three, confirming the reappointment of Joyce Wilkerson to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. Resolution two zero zero two two four, confirming the reappointment of Lee Wong to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. And finally, resolution two zero zero two two five, confirming the appointment of Amin Akbar to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. This time, the chair recognizes this woman, Ray Kion, for his remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, the Committee of the Whole will consider appointments to the Boards of SEPTA in the School District of Philadelphia. Nearly two years ago, on July first, 2018, the Board of Education formally regained control of the administration, management, and operation of the School District of Philadelphia. Today's confirmation hearings are part of the Whole Charter's public process for considering such nominations. We're grateful to the Board to continue public service on behalf of our students, our teachers, our parents, and our families.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Our first witness to testify in SEPTA Board Resolution Number two zero zero one five one is Debbie Muller, Deputy Mayor of the Department of Public Safety.
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. I want to thank Council President Clark and all members of City Council who allow me to testify today. Most of you know me. I've been involved in city government longer than I would publicly admit. I've worked with most of you in your state with a number of occasions and projects. I believe I've always been respectful and attentive, even when we need to disagree. As you know, these are unprecedented times. We are in a crucial moment in our city's history, and SEPTA will be an essential force in helping us move through this crisis. I've always been a firm believer in use of public transportation. As we move forward and restore confidence in our public transit system, we need to rebuild our public ridership back to pre-candemic levels. We need to make sure that all Philadelphians have voice and decision to determine the future course of public transportation in our city. It is my hope to align our government affairs office with SEPTA as a part of the Board and use my experience to be a strong athlete for transit needs both Parisburg and Washington. I want to be able to reach our shared priorities, including overall bus network redesign and improve service. The mayor is focused on the transformation of bus service over the next four years through a network designed by adding and reducing bus priorities. The bus system has 160 million rides per year, which compares to ridership of Raleigh, Regent, and Surrey, Long Island. Making our bus network more reliable, portable, and attractive makes a significant improvement in the daily lives of residents and visitors alike. I look forward to work in partnership with Mike Carroll, our deputy managing director for the Office of Transportation Infrastructure and Sustainability, who currently serves on the Board. My governmental affairs experience, coupled with Mike's knowledge and expertise in operations, will make an effective nomination for our city. I believe now, more than ever, we need quality public transportation. Bringing mass transit is key to keep the Philadelphians moving in a growing, in an inclusive manner, cutting greenhouse gases and keeping the economy competitive. I look forward to representing the mayor, both you and the residents of Philadelphia for the Board. A responsibility I do not plead lightly. With your support and guidance, I know we can ensure a strong SEPTA for all Philadelphians. I want to thank you, Cam, for the opportunity to testify, and I ask for you to serve. Thank you. I hope that was okay. There's a lot of feedback.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the committee? There being none? Are there any members public to testify in SEPTA Resolution Number two zero one five one? Thank you. There none? We now consider the Board of Education Resolutions. Witnesses to testify, Board of Education Resolutions two zero zero one seven, two zero zero eight, two zero zero nine, two zero zero twenty, two zero zero two, two zero zero three, two zero, two twenty-four, and two zero, three, five. Joyce Wilkerson, Julia Danzy, Letitia Hinton, Mallory Lopez, Dr. Maria McCollgan, Angela MacGyver, Lee Wong, Amin Akbar. Good morning. Thank you all for today. Please state your names, proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, members of City Council. This is Joyce Wilkerson. Council members, first, I want to thank you for your time today. I know that you've gone above and beyond in order to accommodate our need to have Board members reappointed. We appreciate your partnership over the years. It made an enormous difference in the operation of the school district on behalf of the children of Philadelphia. I want to also thank Mayor Kenny for nominating us to continue on, and we appreciate as well the nomination of Amin Akbar. We think he'll be a valuable addition to the Board. Our hope today is to introduce ourselves individually and then to talk briefly about the work that we've been doing over the last eighteen months and what we hope to accomplish in the coming years. With that, I'd like to start with introductions of Board members individually, and Amin Akbar will be our first nominee to speak.
Good morning, folks. My name is Amin Akbar. I'm a native Philadelphian, graduate of J.R. Masterman School at Penn State University. Thank you for this opportunity. Spent the last twenty-five years doing youth development work. A lot of my early career started in the playground, and yes, playground is where I spent most of my days, Dorothy Manuel Playground in Mount Ery. Did some juvenile justice work prior to joining Youth Bill Philadelphia Charter School. And during that time, I also was an assistant and head basketball coach at Penn State Abington. Like I said, most recently spent the last fourteen years at Youth Bill Philly in a number of different capacities: case management, mentoring, student leadership. And in the last several years, was a senior director and most notably ran our AmeriCorps program. It was about 230 AmeriCorps members, most of which were students. Youth Bill Philly is specifically dedicated towards an out-of-school youth population. We used to call them dropout, but we know that label is much more complicated than the word dropout. More specifically, a lot of my work has been credited for organizational culture and restorative practices throughout our whole organization in the late 2000s, and it's been the crux of my work. Currently, I still do consulting work for a lot of organizations, youth-facing organizations, and still cook high school basketball and help facilitate a youth leadership program. Lastly, I'll say, most of my work is very much in the space of direct youth, young people engagement, and those practitioners that work with youth-facing people. And that is the foundation of my work. I am appreciative of this opportunity and look forward to bring my lens as a native Philadelphian and somebody who feels like they have the presence of young people, community, families to support. Appreciate the opportunity.
Our next nominee who'll be speaking is Julia Danzy.
Good morning, Council President and Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I hope you can hear me. Many of you may know me already. I come with a deep knowledge of the Human Services System. I have been an advocate for children all my life, and it has been evident in my work as many years with DHS and then as Deputy Commissioner, Deputy Secretary for Children and Youth at the state, Deputy Commissioner with the Health Department, and last process with the city was as Director of the Division of Social Services. After my work with the Republican, I was a private consultant with child welfare agencies who were trying to reorganize and also working with an IT team to help other states in terms of their IT development for social services systems. During that period of my work, I gained an invaluable knowledge about the intricacies of working with institutions that straddle between the public, the political, and the private, that has given me a knowledge of how to manage budgets and also has given me a full picture in many ways because of my work of many of the problems and complexities that are impacting upon our children. As a result of that, I believe those experiences will be invaluable as we work with our children, particularly now at a time when they've had more trauma than I think we ever could imagine for them. I thank you for this opportunity, and I'll be open for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Letitia Ahia Hinton.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. I am originally from New York, grew up between Philly and New York, and made Philadelphia my hometown. I raised my family here, was educated here, and have an extensive history in human services. I've worked both in the nonprofit world with organizations like Crime Prevention and have moved into city government and worked, actually started my career with city government in Philadelphia prison systems, went on to the Department of Human Services, and then ended up in homeless services, where some of you may know me from. I have over thirty-plus years in human services, and twenty-eight of those years I spend in adult services, working with families, single adults, and really working with the population of people that are disenfranchised and require a variety of assistance, having also worked with many systems and also understanding the intersection between the nonprofit world, government, and other institutions to move forward the services that are needed for our populations. My passion certainly has always been in human services, but my own experience has taught me that education can be transformational, and it happened for me, and I believe that this is something that needs to happen for the children in the city of Philadelphia. It is my hope that I will be given the opportunity to be able to continue the work that we have started as a Board. Thank you.
And next is Mallory Fix Lopez.
Good morning. Thank you, Council President and members. My name is Mallory Fix Lopez. I am currently a full-time faculty member at the Community College of Philadelphia. I'm the Assistant Chair for the English Department at this moment, focusing on ESL, Students Studying English as a Second Language. So I started my career here in education, here in Philadelphia, at the Temple University, before I received both my bachelor's degree and master's in education. And over the past seventeen years here in Philadelphia, most of my work has been focused on ESL education, teacher training, and workforce development. So I started my career as a teacher in this city of Philadelphia at Thomas Edison High School. After several years there, I transitioned into a lot of different roles in education. I worked in Temple University College of Education as adjunct faculty with teacher training, and the same position at Morgan College of Art and Design in teacher training. Also taught English in the English Language Program at the University of Pennsylvania for over five years. On the other side, a lot of my work has been with nonprofits in workforce development. So I've done a lot of work creating and organizing restaurant workers, to focus, non-native English-speaking restaurant workers, focusing on language and cultural training needed for upward mobility in the workforce, and I did that creating programs for the Darksus Foundation. I created the Edible Alphabet, which is a program at the Free Library of Philadelphia that runs at multiple branches around the city, using the kitchen as the medium for language development. I currently am working on the Free Library of Philadelphia's 21st Century Community Libraries Initiative, the lead consultant on helping libraries to turn outward and better connect and respond to the needs of their communities. This is something that's here in Philadelphia and will branch out to national library systems across the country and actually in Canada as well. And then I've done a lot of work recently with the Welcoming Center for New Philadelphians, working again around workforce development, upward mobility, focused specifically on technology and language development. It's been an honor and a challenge over the past two years to be a member of the School Board. I feel like, at this point, I now feel like, you know, we've trained for the last two years, we understand what this world is, and are ready to take on this challenge together as moving forward in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Next is Lee Wong.
Thank you, President Wilkerson. Good morning, Council members. My name is Lee Wong. I'll start by saying I'm a proud member of the Third Councilmatic District. Thank you, Councilwoman Gaudier, for your leadership so far. I'm a principal at E-Consul Solutions, a Philadelphia-based economic consulting firm, which has had the privilege of supporting the work of council in securing an economically prosperous and socially just city. I'm also a school district parent. I have a ninth grader at Central, a seventh grader at Penn Alexander, and our youngest starts kindergarten this fall at Penn Alexander. It's been an honor to serve on the Board of Education, and I welcome the opportunity to continue to serve, and in doing so, to join you as public servants in advocating for our children. Their future and ours, and that of our fair city, is on the line, and I'm eager to continue to step forward to do my part.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Our next speaker is Dr. Maria McCollgan.
Thank you, President Wilkerson. My name is Maria McCollgan. I am a child abuse pediatrician at the Rowan School of Osteopathic Medicine. I'm a lifelong Philadelphian. I was born and raised in South Philadelphia, where your neighbors are all a family. I now live in Northeast Philadelphia with my husband, parents, and two children who attend Philadelphia Academy Charter School. I went to Temple University, where I received three degrees, a master's in elementary education and my medical degree. After medical school, I did my residency at St. Christopher's Hospital for Children, where I stayed on as an emergency doctor, emergency room doctor, and eventually became the founding director of the Child Protection Program at St. Christopher's Hospital for Children. In my role as a child abuse pediatrician, I've had the opportunity to work with child protective services, including DHS and New Jersey Division of Child Protection and Permanency, working with professionals in law enforcement, health protection, and many other fields to help protect children. Prior to medical school, I was a teacher in the School District of Philadelphia, where I loved working with children and often saw, what I now know, the behavioral effects of children exposed to trauma. My experiences as a teacher and as a big sister, a little sister, in the Big Sister Program at Philadelphia, have taught me and instilled in me a passion to help children and to make the School District of Philadelphia be the best that it can be. I'm sorry for the feedback. I'm proud to be a member of the Board, and I look forward to continuing to serve the children of Philadelphia and make sure that they have the best education that they possibly have with every child there.
Dr. Angela MacGyver.
Hi, thank you, President Wilkerson. My name is Angela MacGyver. I am a former middle school math teacher. I love teaching math to run the Temple University Math Science Upper Bound Program for high school students. We were named a National Model Program because of the number of students that we matriculated into college, but we completely failed in our keeping them in their math and science fields. So I left to go back to school to study why older children with weak math foundations find it difficult to mediate. I got my PhD in 2005 from the Graduate School of Education at Penn, and then I left and started a business that worked with students and teachers in workforce development, out-of-school youth, and created a company called Math Foundation that trained teachers of older students how to better support numerous development. We did a lot of work with the Department of Labor, U.S. Department of Labor and Child Core Program, and then I began pivoting, focusing on elementary education, and founded Trapezium Math, and that is what I have been doing up until this point. I have been in Philadelphia for thirty years. I have three children, a daughter who is graduating this year from Central High School. She's chosen to go to Temple University. I have a son who's a sophomore at Central and a daughter who's in seventh grade at Penn Alexander. I'm excited about being a Board member, and thank you for your time.
And then finally, I am Joyce Wilkerson. I am a lawyer by training. I've been in Philadelphia since 1979, came specializing in public housing, representing public housing tenants. I then went on to work at the Redevelopment Authority, where I focused my work on developing affordable housing. Then I became Chief of Staff to John Street when he was Council President, and when he became mayor, I became Chief of Staff, where I focused on the Neighborhood Transformation Initiative and the turnaround of the Philadelphia Gas Works. After that, I moved to New Orleans, where I ran the Redevelopment Authority for a few years following Katrina. I'm currently on the staff of the President of Temple University. In 2016, I was appointed to the School Reform Commission. I'm proud of the work done to return the district to local control and proud of the role I played in helping to negotiate a teacher's contract and the return to local control. We have a presentation that we developed with the challenges that we're having with the technology. I don't know, Council President, whether you'd rather have us just summarize it briefly or just move straight to questions from Council members. So I'll take your lead on that.
Hearing no one. I can speak briefly. The Board does... I'm sorry.
Ms. Wilkerson? I'm sorry. I stepped before a second. Sorry about that. I believe we have a couple of Council members like to ask a question, comment, like to recognize the Councilwoman Brooks, if she has a question.
Thank you so much, Council President. I have two questions I'd like to ask. The first is in reference to charter schools. As you know, one-third of Philadelphia's schools is currently in charter schools, and charters have consistently stated that they can be better than district-type schools, but many fail to do so. A number of charter schools also pay their leadership exorbitant salaries, such as Community Academy Philadelphia School, which pays its yield over $225 salary to manage one school in comparison to Dr. Hinton, who makes $311,000 to manage a 210 school. How do you... I'm sorry, how do you, as the role charter schools in Philadelphia for the next four years? If you agree... I'm sorry. Do you agree with the now-retired School Board Member, Dr. Chris McHill, that the Renizant Charter School fail experience should end? Should I just do all the questions?
I... We can take them one at a time. I think that that might be easier. Charter school, the Board's approach in tackling charter schools has, in all schools, has been to focus on quality. Are these schools delivering on educational excellence for our children? We've tried to keep that as our focus. There are challenges, though, with charter school legislation, and so for the last year and a half, we've been focused on lobbying in Harrisburg to get improvements that would give us the kind of controls that we ought to have. We currently don't have control over setting salaries for charter school personnel. We don't have flexibility in where they locate, and we have huge challenges with the special education funding formula that makes charter schools a runaway cost for the school district. And so our approach has been to lobby in Harrisburg to try to get the changes that will allow us to manage the charter school system in a way that supports public education overall. We're trying to operate one system of public education, not eighty-seven systems plus, you know, a public school district. So that's been our general approach in our work. And I don't know if any other members want to speak separately on that. You have other questions?
I have another. The next one is on parent community engagement. The district has struggled to generally engage parents and families in the work of educating our students and families, balancing generations of distrust between school communities and neighborhoods. You guys have made an effort in the last year, so I would give you credit for that. As you know, the schools this year embarked on a comprehensive school planning review process, the CSPR process, a multi-year process that will inform the district's decisions about school closing, school consolidation, and school opening. The CSPR is a big deal, and I'm concerned that the families and communities, in particular our immediate families and communities, have been left out again. I'm concerned with what my staff has saw during the public input for the CSPR process. For some neighborhoods, lots of parents feel the pressure and get feedbacked to the town personnel, and others, or sometimes both families and community members attended. And why, some of the reasons for no child care were provided at these meetings, no language interpretation at these meetings, and the meetings... And the meetings were promoted almost exclusively online or were delegated to already worked principals. The Division of Engagement is especially stark at SBR in Philly where two schools were assigned the same breakout room. The two schools were Child and McDaniels, which are both located in ethnic, gendered by makeup. Child is already gendered by section and part of the neighborhood. And their student population is increasingly white and higher income. At least twenty parents, people who are parents or interesting community parents were in the rooms for Child. At McDaniels, which is not yet gendered by section of neighborhood, it had three principals in the last two years and the students are almost entirely black and low income. There were exactly three people in the room representing McDaniels. The new principal just started three weeks before. One parent who was forced to bring her children to live with her was often occupied with parents for them. This kind of uneven representation means that certain voices are overrepresented and other voices are not represented at all. If we continue to operate this way, legacy of institutional racism will be perpetuated and compounded. We must do things differently. We must start now. How will you ensure that the school district includes all families and all communities? Not only in the CSPR process, but in all districts that affect the students, schools, and communities?
The district has a, the, the board rather, has a committee on partnership and community engagement. It's chaired by Mallory Fix Lopez and Julia Danzy. And so perhaps one of you would answer the question. With respect to the CSPR, I think the board understands that there are challenges with that program and we've asked that it be paused for the time being. We think we're, we know we're collecting valuable information, but as you've pointed out, the process has challenges. And so we're going to, you know, pause on that. It is a mechanism that can be used to address issues of inequity if it's run properly. But there, like you've mentioned, there have been challenges. But in terms of engagement going forward, either Julie or Mallory?
I can, I can take this. This is Mallory. I will, I will say, Councilwoman Brooks, it was a bit difficult for me to hear your actual question because it was breaking up a little bit, but I believe in general we're talking about community engagement and making sure it's equitable. Is that correct, President Wilkerson? Okay, so, you know, this has a really long answer. I can say that number one, our concerns, you have echoed all of the concerns, at least speaking for myself. There are huge inequities in engagement for, for the reasons that you've discussed, for the gentrification, for the time of meetings, for childcare, for everything again that you have mentioned. I think, you know, from our committee, this has been a challenge for us because when we created our committee, our intention wasn't to over, or I don't want to overshadow it, wasn't to confuse the public on what we mean by community engagement. Meaning, we really wanted to put back this, the issues of community engagement and the need for it back on the district and not, in a sense, us be the face of that because we are the oversight and it is the district itself that needs to be engaging communities. Things that we have talked about are the use of the face office and how the face office can be ambassadors on the ground, connecting with the diverse communities with individuals directly from those communities. We've talked a lot about better engaging the faith-based communities. And we have some members of that community on our Parent Community Advisory Council, which has definitely helped us to start to gain a wider reach and understand our networks better and how to better utilize and mobilize those networks. There's a long way to go. That is absolutely not unrecognized. And so I think one of the, the missions of, of the board and speaking for myself moving forward is to figure out how to better leverage these networks for exactly the reasons that you're talking about.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I think the easiest thing is if Joyce Wilkerson, if you mute your mic and if everybody just mutes, then we don't get quite the same feedback that might, that might assist it. So, thank you very much and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I did want to follow up on Councilmember Brooks' question about the evaluation of the school board around Renaissance charter schools and the question that remains about whether there has been perspective in terms of Dr. McInley's assessment that it was not a successful initiative and would not continue to be pursued.
Thank you. I, I forgot. I was remiss in not addressing that. The, the district has been conducting studies comparing the Renaissance schools to light schools operated as traditional public schools. And we expect that work to conclude, I believe, this year. The Renaissance program was created as a result of board policy. And at the meeting last night, in response to the, the concern or the resolution proposed by Dr. McInley, the board committed to revisiting that policy and, and to revisit the policy, drawing on the research that's been done over the last few years and also with an understanding of the impact the charter system has on, on district operations and finances. I think it's a very timely question. It was a, an aggressive initiative and we need to make sure that it is delivering in the way it was intended or it probably does not need to continue on. But we'll be, we'll be revisiting that policy. I think we've slated it for our policy committee meeting this summer. So it's one of those issues. Stay tuned. We look forward to continuing to engage with, with council around that issue. It's a, it's a big initiative. A lot of our children who, a lot of our most distressed schools are operated as a part of that system. And so we need to pay attention to it.
One of the things that I think has been a struggle with the school district has been the ability to reflect on major initiatives and evaluate them over time. I think this is obviously always a difficult effort, especially when all the results are not quite as clear or when they're not favorable. But it was a major initiative and it is hopefully here what worked and what didn't exactly work and why. Because we have to learn these lessons going forward.
I just, in response to that, one of the things that this board is trying to do is focus from mere survival in order to an agenda that will drive student success around achievement. And that's frequently challenging as we seem to have more and more curveballs thrown at us. But, but we hope to be more intentional and more strategic and not always in a simply a reactive mode. And so I appreciate that. That insight you shared.
Yeah, absolutely. I understand that the Board of Education cannot base any decisions about charter schools expansion and all of that regarding finances. However, the city of Philadelphia is responsible for financial responsibilities, including revenues and our ability to deliver revenues over to the school district. How do you anticipate communications as, as the district continues to consider charter school expansion approvals? Is there better means for us to better understand what the trajectories on our end are going to look like? Even though I recognize that you cannot. And I'm talking about financial.
Anybody else want to answer that? Or I can take a shot at that. The oversight of the charter schools is a challenge. And what we understand is that, is, is that they have a disproportionate impact on the, the district's operations and there is not the kind of oversight that we need. And so over the last, you know, several years, the district has received about six hundred million additional dollars from the city. More than half of that has gone to charter schools despite the fact that they only educate thirty percent of the children. That's because of a problem with the charter school funding formula. And so not only, you know, does the city have a huge interest, the state does as well. We have focused, we're focusing our effort together with thirty-one other school districts in southeastern Pennsylvania on trying to get legislative changes with respect to the special education formula in particular. Without that kind of, without increased oversight, without some of the fixes in the charter school law, it's difficult to have the kind of oversight that everybody thinks is appropriate. I don't know if council has ever really delved into the financing issues as respect, with respect to the charter schools, but they, you know, they do consume a lot of the revenue received by, by the district. And, and, you know, the oversight, I think, is appropriate.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the requests that I would like to make to the new school board members, that there's, you know, over the next year or so, we are going to have pretty intense conversations about school district funding and city revenue management. It is essential and important for us to understand that, as you said, because I think many people might think of the charter school conversation as being a discussion about models. But we are one of the district's primary funders and revenue generators. And it is important for us to understand that almost half of the revenue that we send over because of the arcane and probably, you know, painfully wrong law that the state has established around charter school funding means that it goes to a fraction of student debt. And so it's a serious issue for us as the district has to consider charter school expansion and renewals or approvals, that that conversation also is communicated over to our end. So we're fully aware of our own financial protection as we go forward. It may not be yours, but it is certainly ours. I appreciate the fact that we have closer conversations. And my last question, I would follow up on the CSPR because we can tell that we've looked at very clearly the importance of pre-communication around the CSPR for parents and communities. I did highlight one area around Kierney, Tackett, and Dara, with Kierney servicing a house security, low-income public community right across the street. And Adara and Tackett taking many of the new residents for what are reasons that we should review. But my last question is on school facilities. And it's largely about the district, it's a look at six months of occupied school count of the month or five and a half months, let's say, to retake a look at tackling, cleaning, and evaluating public school facilities and what the plan is. And how you, how you see parents and city council become part of that conversation?
We have a finance and facilities committee that has been digging into that. And perhaps Letitia Bahia-Hutton or Mr. Wong can respond?
Sure, I, I will try and answer part of the, the question and then Mr. Wong may add additional stuff. We have been meeting, as everyone knows, we meet consistently basically every month with Mr. Creedon, who is responsible for oversight of all that's going on with facilities. We recognize that during this coronavirus episode, that buildings have been, in some cases shuttered. The district has been very conscientious about using this as an opportunity to be able to implement some of the cleaning as well as some of the asbestos remediation. Of course, making sure that the contractors are ensuring that all of the federal requirements in terms of social distancing and so on and so forth are, are being taken care of. But we are moving forward and trying to take advantage of the opportunity that the schools are closed to ensure that some of those projects that were initiated are able to be moved forward. And we, we should be getting a better sense of where they're moving on. We just got an update and they are moving forward with the, I think it was the lead in terms of the cleaning as well as the asbestos and a number of other projects that have been targeted.
So just to be clear, I guess one of my concerns is that Creedon is stepping in, I understand, as COO. We've, again, got a very limited amount of time. I have no doubt that the school district of Philadelphia has a set of projects in play. I'm just wondering, are you planning something bigger? Not just asbestos remediation, but asbestos removal? Are you looking at more than, you know, we saw a list, it was something like maybe a couple dozen schools. Is it like the district? What does the district look like? What will the average parent see when they walk in for the first time for six months into school buildings, hopefully in September? What are school buildings looking like?
Well, the expectation is that the buildings that have been targeted, we just had a conversation about modernization of classrooms, for example. And in that project, there will be, the parents should go and be going into a school where the classrooms that have been targeted will be modernized as well as asbestos remediation will occur in that process.
Yeah, I under, I just would like to add that I do feel like the classroom modernization, while lovely, is an extraordinarily expensive undertaking per classroom. And that one of the concerns is, is that we have a rare opportunity right now to do more than just modernize individual classrooms. We really need to take a look at major rehab and re-outfitting of areas. Now, obviously, I know that this is a difficult financial time to be talking about that. This is not happening in the absence of. But there are, there are questions that I have and I am worried that the district is without a COO right now, does not have a broad-based ambitious plan on major facilities rehabilitation and not individual classrooms. We are going to open up schools in September with, you know, potentially major frustrations involved. And I'll leave that because I think we have more conversations and I want to leave additional questions for my panel colleagues. You know, the, the last thing I do want to say is that I do hope that as we look into, you know, a major, you know, a possibility of a major recession for the city, we're certainly taking a hint. It looks like budget projections on the city and to indicate that we will try to climb out of it and we'll be on a more stable path over the coming years. But it is a serious time and my hope is that this board learned the lessons of 2010, that we cannot cut our way to, to us, but we're already starting with what we've got. The school board does need to work in partnership with the local and parents and advocates, even our loudest, most challenging ones, because pointing to them to leverage dollars at the state level. And go back to the parents and the students who are, will be distressed if I care about them being distressed in terms of physical capacity, per pupil occupation, as the quality of the school. We know that quality of schools, especially at younger, even older levels for children, are necessary. They're not, they're more expensive than packing thirty-five hundred kids, you know, into, into, you know, police spy or something. But we make decisions, Jersey Co., for reasons. They talk more. We have to make the case for them. But it is important that we close down twenty-four public schools, you know, at one point. We give a decision to go to one counselor for every two thousand students. You know, we almost eliminated nurses. We have no lines and information. You know, we almost eliminated nurses, we have no lines and information system. So to the extent that we can keep in those communications, whatever it looks like on the city end, we don't want the austerity but to, and we will be in partnership with you to figure out what, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Ben Johnson.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to take a moment um to publicly um state my support for the new school district nominee, Amin Akbar. I've known the work that he's done with Universal Companies, Boys, the Men Program. I've seen his passion and commitment um to working with predominantly African-American young men from impoverished neighborhoods, but also I had a chance to observe his work throughout the years at um his current um program, which is Philadelphia Youth Bill. Um, you know, Youth Bill is a program that I've always admired since my days of working with the AmeriCorps program. I was a City Year Corps member, um, and being a young man born and raised, and point raised South Philadelphia, having an opportunity to go to college and change my life and come back to contribute to my community, he's doing the same type of work uh with Philadelphia Youth, Youth Bill students. And so I think he's a great addition um to the Philadelphia School Board and look forward to supporting um his nominee today with Mount Volker, most importantly, on his efforts as he can, as he contributes to the Philadelphia School Board. So um, to all the nominees, again, um, congratulations, but also want to take a moment to the new, and acknowledge the new school board nominee, Amin Akbar, and give my public support of him. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. I believe the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first, I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, in sending kudos and congratulations to uh my fellow Mastermen alum, uh Mr. Akbar. Thank you so much for your service and congratulations on uh your nomination and appointment. Uh, to all the members of the board who provided uh testimony, thank you so much for your testimony. Uh, as a graduate of the Philadelphia Public School System by way of Don Berth, Mastermen, and Girls High, and as someone who taught in the school system uh by way of Overbrook and other schools, and as now a parent of young people who are in the public school system uh in Philadelphia, know that I do uh appreciate your service. I, I do have uh just several quick questions and points that I wanted to, to talk about. And if you could just briefly speak to your plans around any capital uh plans for new school facilities uh for the school district of Philadelphia, that's question one.
I, I can speak to that briefly. Um, the district has several new schools on the drawing board. Um, we currently have Solace Cohen that's under construction, the Ri, um, we have a school on Ryan Avenue in the northeast. We've had a huge increase in population in the northeast, so we have a new school going on there. We're rebuilding a Pierce school. Um, as you know, we have um a s- major asbestos problems at Pierce. Um, it's a school that's over a century old and that school is being, um, is going to be rebuilt. Um, we currently um have district personnel, including the principal and, and staff at Pierce, working with architects on the design phase. Um, after that, we'll be abating asbestos in anticipation of the demolition of that building. Um, we also have a school in south, southwest Philadelphia, um, the, and Councilman Jones, you'll help me. Um, I believe it's the Cassidy School um is, is going to be rebuilt as well, and so that school is in the design phase. Um, one of the things that the district is, is wrestling with is making sure that we have the appropriate facilities to support a quality education program. Um, and because of decades of underfunding, um, we find ourselves with, you know, a system of a lot of buildings altogether needing over four billion dollars worth of work and, you know, and we struggle with what we'll have at the end of that whole process. And, and so really our, um, I think it's an opportunity to step back and take a look at, you know, the facilities that we have, how they can be better integrated into the city system of, of facilities. Um, I know it's, it's work that council has been talking about for years now, and um, and, and we look forward that, you know, getting the right process to really revisit those questions. So not only will we have a few schools that are state-of-the-art, but hopefully can come up with strategies that will result in um a district of, of um schools that, that are the kind of schools our, our children deserve. And, and so, you know, so we, we're on the right track in some ways, but we have work to do in many other neighborhoods.
Sure, I think it's very important as we move forward, uh, understanding that we will have a specific budgetary constraint, uh, that we look to develop and establish a capital plan uh for new school facilities as well. My second question is around speaking to the board's philosophy uh around the expansion of special admissions schools in uh every neighborhood in our city. Uh, I think we all recognize that Mastermen uh has consistently been uh one of the top schools in our city and, and across our Commonwealth. Um, but what is our plan for expanding schools like that across uh communities so that more people have the opportunity, more young people specifically have the opportunity uh to attend those type of schools? Uh, because I think, you know, it was, I'm very happy that a number of our parents uh on the board, including myself, have young people in the, the school system, but not every young person has an opportunity to attend a Penn Alexander or a Central or a Mastermen or a Girls High, et cetera. So what is your philosophy around the expansion of those uh high-quality uh learning opportunities?
Dr. MacGyver, you wanna?
Um, sure, I can, I, I can speak to that, thank you.
Dr. MacGyver is one of the chairs of our Student Achievement Committee, so.
I think one of the best things that the board did was put a pause on the CSPR process that allows us to step back and think about what are the um critical initiatives that we should be looking at. And one of the things that has come up over the past year is that the special admit magnet schools were not part of that, part of that bigger decision. And I think that as a board, we need to revisit that because I agree with the population changes in the city, having access to more special admit schools is critical for keeping people in the city, right? And um feeling good about options for their children. Uh, it's not lost on me that I've had opportunities for my children to attend these schools, and I think every parent should. Um, so I think that's, that's something that we have debated and, and, and discussed um, and will be looking at moving forward. And Joyce, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is we're, we're gonna be focused more intensely on driving quality across the entire school district. Um, you know, special educate, you know, special admit schools are wonderful, but we ought to have high-quality, everyday schools in Philadelphia, um, and are going to be very intentional about, you know, about elevating the question of student achievement. You know, are our children learning? Are they learning at a high level in every school? Um, so in addition to, you know, the, the issues and the concerns Dr. MacGyver has raised, we're going to be raising that concern for all of our schools. Um, we, we acknowledge that there's huge inequity in our schools and are determined to tackle that issue, um, driving achievement across the whole network of schools. So I appreciate your focus on that issue.
May I add to that, and Joyce, yes, that the shift for the board has been a, a huge piece of how we think about students in the school district and that our focus entirely should be on student achievement and learning. Um, whereas previous action meetings covered everything, and we may talk about student achievement and learning, we may not. And we have done a lot of work in this past year to shift the way we think about governing that our primary purpose is to focus on student achievement and learning and to see those, those improve at every action meeting. We want to see how we're doing that. So I think looking at both of those i- is really gonna uh address those issues that you brought up.
May I weigh in here? Uh, this is Board Member Wong. Uh, uh, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson's question and Councilwoman Gimm's question, I think really um resonate with our more strategic approach. Um, the district for at least a dou- couple of decades has had to be very reactive. Finances have been distressed, haven't been able to look out into the future. We still have a very short-term perspective in terms of having to deal with the challenges right in front of us. But as a board, we're also trying to think big picture. Some of us have very small uh children who are gonna be in the system for ten, fifteen more years, so this is personal. And so being able to take that strategic perspective, how do we invest in student achievement? How do we invest in the physical plans that supports student achievement? These are the kinds of things that we're trying to keep our eye on, even as we have to keep our eye on the things that are right in front of our nose. So we appreciate the uh long-term perspective that is uh accounted for in your questions and, and we're, we're trying our best to meet you uh in that way.
Okay, thank you so, uh, so much for that response, and I think it'll be very important that we look um to this process with a long-term lens, uh, as I know that I have a daughter who's going into kindergarten next school year. So thank you so much uh for that perspective. My last question uh is, again, we recognize that we have uh budget challenges and specifically around the, the charter school legislation in Harrisburg and the special education formula. Uh, I just wanted you to speak to your overall strategy uh and/or standard operating procedure around the evaluation of schools um using a racial and equity lens. Uh, I do uh have and, and have received a number of concerns um around schools that were either founded by or run by African-Americans that are disappearing from our city, uh, and that is of concern. So if you could speak to um your overall strategy and philosophy around using a racial and equity lens in your evaluation, that would be helpful. Thank you.
We start by focusing on, on school quality. Um, and when you look at um the issue you've raised about, about equity among or fairness towards schools established by minority um founders, it's a, it's a bigger issue. You know, I've, I've learned a lot from talking with Christina Grant, who runs our charter school office and who was very involved in operating and establishing charter schools up in New York. And what she says is that it's a problem nationally, you know, that a lot of these independent minority-operated charter schools um don't have the financial backing that other charter schools have, and so they struggle. Um, they don't have the resources. Any kind of financial blip um puts them at risk. So when you look at schools that have closed in Philadelphia, a lot of them have closed because of financial challenges. Um, they're, you know, that that is as much a part of what has happened as anything. Um, when you look, when you look at the decisions made by this board, um, when you look not just at the school closing decisions, but when you look at um what we have approved as new charter schools, I think you'll be surprised at the, the balance that there is there. Um, we've been no less critical of um majority-operated schools. We've asked the questions, are they delivering on quality? You know, before they get another school, what are they doing with the schools that they already have? Um, and so we have in, in just this last round, um, um, I think been as aggressive with both majority and minority schools and um had two charter schools apply and neither one of them um were approved. So we've, you know, we understand that there are issues, um, but there are underlying challenges that, that minority charter schools face that, that um, um, beg for a more comprehensive um solution, and Philadelphia needs to align itself with, with other organizations nationally that are trying to tackle this issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, I believe the next individual is Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I will be very brief with my comments. I want to thank you all for your service on, on the school board. Uh, I know dollars have been allocated to do some of the things um that Councilmember Kim talked about earlier regarding um remediation, regarding lead and asbestos concerns. Uh, if you could provide a list to the Council President of those projects that got started as of uh the COVID-nineteen pandemic and then prior to the new school year starting and all, a list of those projects that have been completed and also those projects to be completed. Thank you.
We'll get, we will get that over to you today's Friday next week. Um, we have, we have all that, we'll pull it together for you.
Thank you, Councilman. Like Chair recognizes Councilman Jones. Councilman Jones. Okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Cartier.
Thank you, Council President. Um, can everybody hear me well?
Yes, we have you.
Wonderful. Um, good morning, everybody. Um, first, I wanted to take an opportunity to say um how pleased I am with the appointment of Amin Akbar. Um, I had the wonderful opportunity to serve on the nominating panel for the local school board, um, and it had the chance to interact with and help select the other members, and I think that Mr. Akbar will make a wonderful addition to the board. Um, I also have a question for the members. Um, the shutdown due to the coronavirus has exposed just how important it is that all students in the district uh and, and the city have access to Wi-Fi and any soap dump. Um, I know that the district is working on a plan to distribute hotspots, but I wanted to know where we are with that and how prepared we are to educate virtually, uh, both for the remainder of the shutdown and in the event that we ever have another.
You're, um, you were breaking up, but your question is um the technology and developing um the curriculum to educate all children.
No, my question is about Wi-Fi access and how we're doing with our plan to make sure that students have, that all students have Wi-Fi.
We were just briefed yesterday by the superintendent on that issue. Uh, we had thought that getting Chromebooks in the hands of kids would be the big challenge. That's turned out to be only part of the challenge, and so the district is looking at um buying hotspots that we will be distributing to some families. Um, it comes at a pretty substantial cost, and, and so we'll, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to tackle that. I think there are going to be a huge number of lessons learned um over the next several weeks, and um, you know, providing enhanced access um to the internet is one of them. Um, we, we learned just yesterday, I guess, um, Board Member Fitz Lopez had participated on a call with the Pennsylvania School Board Association and found out that there's some schools that have already gone back to paper because they could not figure out the way forward with um all the technology challenges. We're not taking that direction. We're not taking that direction, but there are challenges, and they come at a fairly substantial cost, and so, you know, we're working on that.
President Wolkerston, can I add to that?
Sure.
Response? Yes, so just to clarify.
That's Mallory Fitz Lopez.
Yeah, Mallory Fitz Lopez. So just to clarify, those schools that have gone back to paper are not the school district of Philadelphia. Those are directions that other districts across the state have taken, even some that are, you know, much, much better funded than Philadelphia, because they've realized the inequities of internet access. And from talking statewide, it seems to be the general consensus that it is harder to have internet access than the actual device. Dr. Height also discussed that yesterday, but that's saying that this is a national concern, that it is not just Philadelphia, it's not just Pennsylvania, it is across the country. And I think that this is maybe where City Council, you know, and all the city at large can work together to talk about this, because if we are online or in some hybrid form moving forward, it really, it really needs to be addressed at a much higher level.
Can you speak to the progress we've made with distributing the hotspots?
I think that's a much more recent decision by the district, that it's going to have to acquire hotspots. It had started by working with some of our internet service providers on expanding their public access Wi-Fi. We're realizing that's not enough, and are looking to, on a fairly limited basis, acquire hotspots. But that's just, that's a very recent decision, and so I can't report on the magnitude or how effective that is.
Thank you.
Done. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you now again, Mr. President. My congratulations also to the new board members, but in particular Debbie Mallor, who is not new to government, but new to the school board, and I hope to watch her move the school board forward in education in Philadelphia in a good direction. I want to follow my colleagues' questions on online learning. I've been getting a lot of feedback on email about parents who have been challenged, to say the least, not just because of access to technology, but we have trained professionals in classroom teachers who know how to keep the attention of young people, and make sure that that kind of educational discipline happens. Some parents have become frustrated with their own children. Is there any way that we could implement or reinstitute parent university, where we kind of instruct parents on how to be teachers in their own homes?
This is Angela McIver, I'm Chair of the Student Achievement Committee, and also an educator, and I think that's a very interesting concept, and it's something that parents are dealing with right now, that, that we haven't talked about but recognize, that's the reality of so many parents now during this time. So I don't know if anyone else wants to speak on that. I don't know if anyone else wants to speak on that, but I think that's something that beyond this, we need to engage parents more so that they are able to support their children at home. That is a, that is a critical piece, and it is one of the differentiators we know between students, and there is an equity issue there. So, thank you for that, I'm processing. And I wonder if there's anyone else who wants to speak to that.
I'm processing too. You know, we're learning, right? This is, this is a new day for all of us, and so we've had to do professional, we've had to do professional development with our teachers. We understand in a more profound way that the whole family has to be involved in, you know, coming on board with, with the, you know, use of technology. And so we're learning, we're trying to put additional resources, you know, in front of families, but it's going to take more than simply posting a link and saying, hey, look at this. We, you know, we will get through this school year. I was, I attended a presentation by the Philadelphia Education Fund, and some of the school district personnel was saying there are going to be a lot of lessons learned, you know, and that, that at the end of this semester, we're going to have to figure out what's worked, what hasn't worked. And so we're trying to do our best with the remainder of this school year, but we've got a lot of work to do going forward, and thank you for the idea of the college, or the, you know, the school board. Parent University, thank you for that.
I, this is Angela McIver, and I just want to add to that, that this is something we really do need to think about, because we don't know what September is going to look like. We don't know if we're going to have, you know, children home board, if there's a second leave, and so really being forward-thinking about how we support families at home with their children is something we have been encouraging the school district to do, so.
So.
Can I weigh in here?
Just a second. What, I was talking to Member Isaiah Thomas, and he was talking about another aspect of that, which is socialization. Single parents with single kids, it is another aspect of education. And so when you're looking at the parent university, please consider that aspect of it as well. How do you get recess into the virtual education process?
Just to pick up on that, the inequities that we confront in the district predate the coronavirus, of course, and this crisis also represents an opportunity, as other board members have said, for us to learn, how do we support our households? How do we layer on technology resources? These are challenges that are independent of COVID-19. They have just been brought to the fore because of it, and so we have an incredible opportunity, if we choose to step into it, to learn, and then to do, so that our most vulnerable households will have that support, and we are definitely keeping our eye on that ball.
So finally, if you can get feedback from parents that are going through this, and create a matrix of what we can learn, we are introducing a resolution to hear lessons learned from different segments of government and private sector, so that we can say, all right, if we ever have to go through this again, which God, I pray we don't, here's what we know how to do and put in place to address education. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Councilman. I believe Councilwoman Brooks had a question for Debbie Mallor, board appointment, Scepter.
Yes, I did.
Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Brooke.
All right, I had two, but I'm going to take it down to one. As you may know, that I am from the Nicetown neighborhood in North Philadelphia, and though I love my neighborhood, it's been plagued with environmental racism. The EPA reports that Nicetown has 75% more fine particular pollution, and up to 95% more diesel exhaust compared to other communities across the country. One in three children in Nicetown have asthma, a condition that is clearly linked to increased population in our neighborhood, and yet Scepter is putting a natural power plant on the same property as the Midfield Bus Depot in Nicetown. Can you commit now to moving Scepter towards 100% clean renewable energy sources, and in neighborhoods like mine in Nicetown?
Well, Councilwoman, I haven't served on the board yet, so I can't commit to anything at this point, but I promise I will listen to what you just said. Ending racism and cleaning up the environment is important to me as I move forward, and believe me, I'm listening to what you're saying. So please trust that I will, I will carry that message over there. But thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I'll get back on camera. Here we go. Okay, are there any members? I want to thank all of you so much for your testimony. First of all, we really appreciate what you've done, and anticipate continuing work, because this is clearly one of the most significant things we can do in our public life and in our private life, is educating our young people. I believe we have an individual from the public who wishes to testify, Lisa Haber. Is Ms. Haber still available? Lisa Haber.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council President Clark, members of City Council. My name is Lisa Haber, I'm speaking on behalf of the members of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools, and I want to thank you and your staff, and staff of Councilmember Maria Cionna Sanchez for making sure we have an opportunity to speak. Because unfortunately, this is the only step in this process where the public has a chance to be heard. Mayor Kenny ordered his nominating panel to conduct all deliberations in executive session, which is a clear violation of the PA Sunshine Act, and really a disservice to the people of the city who care deeply about the education of our children. Unlike voters in every other state in the district, the people of Philadelphia continue to be disenfranchised in the selection of the government officials who represent them on the Board of Education and oversee a $3 billion budget. This has been a very difficult year for the district, for all the reasons that board members have just laid out before you, and it's really important during difficult times such as these, to make sure that the democratic rights of Philadelphians are not violated. We need to be able to choose the best people to represent us while making those difficult choices. Having attended SRC meetings for years, and fought along some of the people who are now current council members against the privatization of schools, I was dismayed to see none of the activists that I worked with as any of the mayor's choices in 2018. As a person who attends all the board meetings, I can say there is no question about the dedication of the people who now serve on the board, but that's not the point. The point is making sure that the people who are taxpayers, citizens, educators, parents, and students have a say in this choice. When the current board was seated, each new member gave a statement about his or her background and beliefs about education and public service. But the people in suburban districts know that about candidates for school board before that, when they go to the polls, and that helps them to make their choice. Those who care about our public schools will continue to advocate in City Council and at Board of Education meetings. We will use our three minutes, which are now down to two minutes, to fight to make sure that our children have quality public schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there any other members of the public that wish to testify? Thank you, there being none. That concludes the public hearing of the Committee to Hold. We will now go into our public meeting.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Okay. And the Chair recognizes Councilmembers Cionna Sanchez for motion, Resolutions 200151, 20017, 200218, 200219, 200220, 200222, 200223, 200224, and 200225.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege before I put forth the motion. As the new Chair of the Board of the Committee on Education, I want to thank all of the members of the Education Committee and the rest of my colleagues for putting forth some of the concerns that we look to work for, look forward to working with the newly-elected school board, and through this appointment process. The conversations that have been ongoing are hugely important and really speak to council's values. Having served in council in 2009 and 10, when we make tough decisions, one of the proudest things as a member of council has been our unabashed way in which we have supported, defended, and financed the school district, even when the federal and state government hasn't done so. And so I want to thank council and my colleagues for the fact that we have stood up when others haven't, because this has been always a priority of this council. Council President, you in particular, as we talked around the poverty plan, we, there were a lot of issues that came to the forefront. The digital literacy and skills gap around adults is important, and members brought up the issue of what this distance learning is going to look like, and access to the internet, and it really speaks to the core of what's going on in our neighborhoods, if our own parents can't be helpful to their students, or what would become the new normal. So I look forward to that, look forward to working and continuing to address the issues of the facilities, as we imagine what a new school board and a district should look like, and what our young people deserve in every single neighborhood. I look forward to working with the Chairwoman, Joyce Wolkerston, and creating a more robust policy conversation between the Committee of Education and the school board, and hope that through this, we will make decisions that may be difficult, but that they are student-focused, and hopefully continue to invest, and the school board pivots to high education standards for all children. So, Mr. President, with that, I proudly support, and I move for the resolutions 200151, 200217, 200218, 200219, 200220, 200222, 200223, 200224, and 200225, be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit consideration of these resolutions at our next council session.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly second. That resolution is 200151, 200217, 200218, 200219, 200220, 200222, 200223, 200224, and 200225, be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit consideration of these resolutions at our next session of council. All those in favor, motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolutions 200151, 200217, 200218, 200219, 20020, 200222, 20023, 200224, and 20025, will be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation, and a suspension of the rule to allow for next consideration at our next session of council. This concludes business of the committee. I would ask council members, please don't go anywhere. In addition to, we have to stay in order, so I would suspect full compliance with this particular request. So see you guys in five minutes, just want to take a break before we move into our council session. Thank you.